By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the County Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it.
Welcome.
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Flanagan.
Here.
President Leonard.
Present.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Council did have an executive session before the regularly scheduled meeting for legal matters. The first item on the agenda is introduction of a part-time firefighter?
I'm going to ask Vice Sokolowski to come on the podium. We've, previously we had part-time firefighters and our new full-time firefighter in front of you for an introduction, and we discussed specifically how this Borough Council has reinvigorated a dedication to the fire services and really is putting, pumping in resources to our fire and our emergency services across the board. But tonight, we wanted to do a special welcome to our first female firefighter in the Borough of Conshohocken. And Ray, if you could do the honors of the introduction?
I'll do it real, very quickly because we have, obviously, a full house today. But I want to introduce Alexis Wilmot. She's going to be our first paid, part-time fire, female firefighter. Alexis went through the full-time test program. She also, she also applied for part-time. We obviously have found a need that we need some more part-timers, so Alexis is going to come on board. She currently works for Upper Providence Township as a part-time firefighter also. She has a long history in the firefighter service. Her family is members of the Flower Town Fire Department. She's a member there and also works there. So I just want to introduce her. She's, again, it's Alexis Wilmot.
Welcome. Just wanted to thank you for having me tonight, and I look forward to serving the community of Conshohocken.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations. We're excited to have you. The next item on the agenda is consider the preliminary final monitor subdivision and land development approval for 144 West Ninth Avenue, MTB Development. Mr. Jones? Mr. Hughes?
Good evening. Paul Hughes from Kimley Horn representing Mr. Jones, or MTB Development LLC, in this case. I have a very brief presentation to, for reminder for council and for the benefit of the public for where we've been, where we are, and why we're here this evening. Quick overview slash history of the property. This is 144 West Ninth Avenue. It's about an 8,400 square foot property that we're proposing to subdivide into two 4,200 square foot lots for two single-family homes. We've been before Borough Council on January 16th for a conditional use hearing where a conditional use was granted for the demolition of the single-family home greater than 50 years old. We then went to the zoning hearing board on January 17th for approval for lot width, for 30-foot wide lots where 40 feet is required, and for accessory structure area or footprint where for 400 square foot garages where 350 square feet is the maximum. On March 14th, we visited the planning commission where they recommended conditional preliminary final approval. This is the site plan showing the subdivision and the two single-family homes, and the two detached garages, 400 square feet loading from the alley in the rear. We're also proposing public improvements, new sidewalk, and a curb-to-curb mill and overlay for the limits of the property. This is the landscaping plan, showing a basic landscaping layout with two street trees in the front, landscaping in the front and rear of the house, and in front of the garages. And stormwater management is proposed by way of two subsurface infiltration facilities in the rear of each lot. This is an elevation view of the proposed house, and as we stated in the conditional use hearing, it's also very similar to the home that was built at 315 East Tenth Avenue by the same builder. And that's all we have. We have a resolution prepared by the Borough Solicitor. Mr. Sokolowski, the applicant's attorney, was not able to make it tonight, but he has reviewed the resolution, as have I, and we do not have any, any issues with the resolution as drafted, and...
So council, the resolution that Mr. Hughes and Mr. Sokolowski reviewed was in your packet for this evening. It outlines the background which Mr. Hughes has gone over in sufficient detail. It also sets forth the waivers that the applicant's requesting, so the waivers are from Section 22-302 and 22-308 for simultaneous submission, review, and approval of preliminary and final subdivision and land development. 22-306A1, a partial waiver from showing features within 100 feet of the property. From Section 22-409.2 to permit grading within three feet of the property line. From Section 22-410.4A to permit use of a six-inch diameter PVC storm sewer pipe for roof drain conveyance. From Section 22-421.4, a partial waiver to permit street trees within the grass strip. From 22-421.6 to excuse the requirement of pedestrian lighting, given the lack of pedestrian lighting in the area. And from Section 22-804 to permit a fee in lieu of dedication of park or recreational space. The resolution contemplates that council would grant preliminary and final approval of the plan, subject to the conditions set forth in the resolution. The applicant would be granted waivers from Section 22-302, 308, and 409.2. The applicant would be granted a partial waiver from 22-306A1, subject to the applicant providing such information deemed necessary by the Borough Engineer. The applicant would be granted a waiver from the requirements out of Section 22-410.4A to permit the use of the six-inch diameter PVC storm sewer pipe. The applicant would be granted a waiver from 22-421.4 for the street trees, provided that the property owner maintain the street trees. The applicant would be granted a waiver from 421.6, condition on the applicant's confirmation to the satisfaction of the Borough Engineer that the lighting in that area is sufficient. Applicant would be granted a waiver from the requirements of Sado, Section 22-804, to permit payment of a fee in lieu of park and recreation facilities in the amount of $8,000. The applicant would be required to comply with your Borough Engineers Review Letter, with your zoning officer's review letter, with any requirements of the Fire Marshal. The applicant shall execute stormwater and land development agreements to my satisfaction, shall impose a deed restriction for each unit prohibiting use of the proposed garages for interior storage so that they're used for parking only, shall satisfy any outstanding invoices with the Borough, and shall abide with all the terms of the resolution as stated. That is the resolution as presented. As Mr. Hughes has indicated, the applicant has accepted the conditions therein, and if council were so inclined, a motion to approve would be appropriate.
I have a question. I have a question first. Paul, I thought we had to use eight-inch four sewer, not six.
This is for, just to, just to convey the roof runoff from, from the buildings into the seepage beds.
Okay.
So it's not for, it's not a sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Conveyance made.
Okay.
Any one else have any questions? Okay, Karen.
I'll make that question.
A second.
In favor, aye, are opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you very much.
Paul, one thing that I should talk to you, because that's my word. Just want to make sure that's one of the better alleys, surface-wise condition. It's just that when you have your subcontractors, and be courteous to the neighbors, and try to keep that alley as, you know, the surface as well as you can, because we do have something in place that you were involved in a bar before that you'll have to replace part of the alley if it's destroyed.
If it's damaged, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is hearing regarding the waiver of off-street parking for 326 Fayette Street. Stephanie Marnelli.
Ms. Stella, if you could please come introduce the applicant.
I think you all are most likely familiar with this building. It is like right across the street. At, the property is 326 Fayette Street, but the piece under consideration tonight is the small accessory building at the rear on Forest Street. It's been used for a number of years as an insurance office, and the owner of the building would like to use it for a smoothie shop. It's not really to be a restaurant, it's to be pickup-only and only, no tables and chairs in, inside of the restaurant. Stephanie is here and can answer any of your questions, describe her business, and let you know what she wants to do.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Stephanie Marnelli. Thank you for your time, first of all. I'm a 29-year-old entrepreneur, your neighbor at 326 Fayette Street, and my two smoothie, soon-to-be, hopefully, smoothie managers who are our number ones at the deli right now.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Gillette.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Gillette. So, I'll begin telling a little bit about myself here. So, two years ago, I had purchased the deli from Donald McIntosh, and about two months ago, I purchased the property. I've been a part of the deli for the last 13 years. Throughout those years, customers have requested smoothies, but simply, we do not have the space inside the deli to accomplish that for them. I've been, we have noticed a more active and healthy-minded community developing and have become more understanding of the residents' and employees' needs. So by community demand, we would like to launch a smoothie shop in the 375 square-foot space in the rear of the deli, which has been occupied by the Allstate Agent Company for the past 12 years. Our objective is to offer Conshohocken a clean eating grab-and-go option. We understand parking in Conshohocken for the residents is a main concern, which is why we're here tonight. This location is nestled in the central business commercial district bordering a residential area where I believe young families and young professionals would enjoy nothing more to be able to walk out of their door and enjoy a quick, healthy snack. Conshohocken has gained a large corporate presence, and as we try to maintain a sense of community, I think it is important we provide venues that cater to the local residents and provide another walkable option for them. We are projecting walk-ups to be our main customer base, comparable to how Scoops operates. For as busy as we are at the deli, we have never had any parking issues arrive. 70% of our business are walk-ins. Most of the smoothie business is projected to be the same and in the late afternoon, from noon to 7:00, when spots adjacent to the deli are typically vacant. We want to stress this business will be strictly grab-and-go, no long-term parking. There will be no tables or chairs inside the facility. We are simply looking to swap out one use for another from office to retail. I have reached out to neighboring businesses and property owners who have been very supportive and believe in the concept of promoting a healthier option for the local community is what we need. With this being said, we are asking you, Conshohocken, to provide us permission to bring the missing ingredient to our already perfect recipe of restaurants in the area.
Thank you. Question, where would your entrance be? Or where would your window be?
The entrance is off of Forest Street. We won't be moving the door at all. It will remain the same, yep.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Do we need a motion?
I'll make that question.
I'll second it.
In favor, aye, are opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Absolutely.
The next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the tree planting project by Barley Van Cleef, the Horticultural Society. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much for letting me come in. Appreciate that. So, I'm Barley Van Cleef. I work for Pennsylvania Horticultural Society in the Tree Tenders Program, which is a training program. Actually, Conshohocken has a lot of tree tenders, and you're about to plant some trees in the bee field. But this is not about those trees. This is about trees that have to do with the 250th anniversary of the United States. And there is actually a nonprofit organization called USA 250 that is trying to orchestrate a larger regional celebration of that anniversary. And so, let me see if I can get this to work. Yep. So what the, what they are doing is developing what is called the Pathway of the Patriots. And they have asked the Daughters of the American Revolution to sort of spearhead some major celebration in the area. And what the Daughters of the American Revolution decided to do was plant 250 trees, one for each year, and by doing so, to commemorate the wonderful contribution that 250 patriots have made to the history of the United States. So, the DAR is going to be identifying who those 250 people are, and they have asked PHS to identify 250 trees and 250 tree planting sites. So, with that in mind, we have, and they, they need to be along the Schuylkill River Trail, which is so highly used, and they are between historic bookends, one end being the Valley Forge National Historic Park, and the other end being Bartram's Gardens, both very venerable institutions, I guess. So, we have traveled the trail many times trying to locate places where we could plant these trees. We initially found 44 sites, and, you know, many more trees than we needed, but the issue has been that if you've been along that trail, you'll know that there is a PICO major transmission line over that area. So there aren't that many places where we can actually plant trees. So, we've identified eight potential sites in Montgomery County, and two of those are in Conshohocken. And so, yeah, and it's going to be a really exciting project. So, we're calling it Zone Six in Conshohocken. There are two locations. One is what we're calling the Stoddard and Fayette Embankment, which is kind of at the Septa Station in a way. And then the other one is what we're calling the Plymouth Creek Sluice Way. And so, we have identified the owners of, we'll start with the first one at the, at the Septa Station area, and we've identified that the Borough of Conshohocken owns actually both of those areas. PennDOT owns a little chunk down at the bottom. We've already started working with PennDOT. We have put in the right-of-way application with PennDOT because, of course, the Fayette Street is PennDOT. And that's well along the way. That's a good possibility. And so, given that, this is a picture of what it looks like now. The transmission line, actually, I had a meeting this morning with PICO, the person who is actually most familiar with the transmission lines, and she identified that, in fact, the pole that you see there is not a PICO line, it is actually Amtrak. So we'll need to be working with them. However, their lines are, and this is way beyond my understanding, DC as opposed to AC, so there is less restriction underneath those wires as far as trees are concerned. So, this is what it looks like now. This is a little bit further away, and the planting plan could look something like this, where each of these dots might possibly be a tree, possibly. And so what we would do is turn this into something that looked like maybe this. And these are not real trees, just so you know. This is a computer program, but it kind of gives you an idea of what the vision would be, that, that there might be more or less trees than this, but they would be, the planting plan would be done, of course, in conjunction with Conshohocken, and would be done by landscape architects so that it is pleasing to the eye that it actually is worthy of the 250th anniversary, and that we are planting the right tree in the right place, which is, of course, near and dear to my heart, because I'm an arborist, and it's important that these trees grow up big and strong and healthy. So, so that is that area, and what it could possibly be. Okay. So the second area is the Sluice Way. And originally, we had, I had gone out with Mike Maxwell and kind of looked at the area that is delineated by the red line as a potential spot for a number of trees. We would like all these trees to be in clusters so that they can be, there can be signage and sort of recognition of the, the groups that are represented. So we went out there and looked, and this is fine as far as the overhead lines are concerned, but we also walked a little bit along this area here and discovered the signs that say that it is a stormwater management area. And what better way to manage stormwater than to plant trees? So in addition, possibly to the area that is delineated here, as of this morning, we would like to also propose that we could maybe plant along the embankment that is over what I believe is Rain Garden, which would be lovely. So that's another set of trees that we could possibly plant. So again, this is what it looks like now, and I understand that there is some consideration of development beyond that area, and, you know, we need to work with that. And again, we're certainly not anticipating doing anything without working with Conshohocken. And this is maybe the potential planting sites, and here they are. Boy, isn't that a miracle? So, again, we would love to see them planted along that embankment as well, because then they would not only be beautiful and commemorate the patriots, but also be a functioning, working landscape to prevent stormwater from reaching the ground. So, so that's basically the two areas in Conshie that we would really love to plant. And the things that you need to know is that these plantings would be done either by contractors and/or by the tree tenders, the trained people who know how to plant and take care of trees, could be both. In the fundraising that the DAR is doing for this project, they are also having a, an endowment, a maintenance endowment. There would be a two-year contract to maintain those trees as they establish. That's how long it takes a tree to really get its roots going so that it can support the bulk of the tree for the long run. So we would definitely be watching those trees for two years, and then there would be this maintenance endowment. So, very little investment on your part. The trees, obviously, would be paid for by DAR. And then the signage would be kind of a universal sort of design that goes the entire length of the project, the whole Patriot Trail. So, there will be charrettes. There's already been one charrette, just to sort of discuss the whole concept, but there will be charrettes about that signage and where it would be located. And, you know, it could be as simple as a tree tag on each tree, or it could be a UR code, is that what it's called? Yeah. So that people could actually access that with their cellphone and get a lot of information about the patriots that are represented at each site. So, that is basically it, and I'm happy to answer questions and, you know, look forward to a possible next step.
Does anyone have any questions, reporting?
No, it was awesome. And I'm a tree tender.
It's, oh yay! I should ask, how many tree tenders are in this class? There, all right. Awesome. That is fantastic. So...
It was a wonderful presentation.
Yes. Well, good.
Do we, do we need nothing?
Nothing at this point. Just presentation.
Thank you so much for coming in. And for considering Conshohocken. It's really a nice plan. Thank you very much.
And it's key, really. You know, Conshohocken is really a key location because it's many miles until we can get to the next possible site.
Oh, yeah.
And many miles before that, too. So, it's really key. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda. Ready for 100% Resolution Presentation, EAC.
Well, Matt's only got five minutes.
You have five minutes?
Yeah, that's all, Matt. Five minutes.
Trust to do that.
Yeah, I know.
Good evening, Borough Council, Mayor, Borough Administration. Thank you for having the EAC come present to you, the Conshohocken Ready for 100% Resolution. It was this time last year with the leadership of appointed member Eliza Lanzuti that we began working on the initiative to transition Conshohocken to 100% renewable energy. The resolution that the EAC is bringing before you this evening is a product of countless hours of planning, of conducting research, and numerous meetings by our Ready for 100% team. And the team is a passionate team of Conshohocken residents, the majority of which are non-appointed members of the EAC. Back in October, when we presented this idea to you, you asked us to work closely with the Borough Administration, and we did just that. And on behalf of the EAC and Ready for 100% team, just want to give my gratitude and thanks to Stephanie Checo and Ray Sokolowski for their input and guidance in the drafting of this resolution. Tonight, you will hear from three members of the Ready for 100% team. Rob Glover will begin the presentation with the core elements of the resolution. Eliza Lanzuti will follow with the next steps the EAC will take if you decide to adopt this resolution. And lastly, Fippen Kumar will speak on how this effort is part of a larger movement, and why time is now to pass this resolution. And of course, after our presentation, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. I think I accidentally skipped that, so...
Thanks. All right. So, I'm Rob. I'm going to start by explaining where we are on this path to 100% renewable energy. And as you know, we started this, well, with you guys last October when we first introduced this idea, and since then, we've taken the feedback we received during that presentation, as well as the feedback we got from Borough Administration, other Conshohocken residents, and other towns who are going along this same path. We've incorporated all that feedback into the resolution that we're presenting today. And additionally, Mayor Aronson has expressed his support for the resolution, and he's joined the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda to help mitigate climate change. So now we're here kind of at the end of Step Two, and asking Borough Council to adopt this resolution and commit so that we can form a clear path forward. So one of the things you guys asked us about last time we were here were, how did the goals of this resolution fit into the goals of Montgomery County as well as the state? And so we looked into that and found that a lot of the goals are very aligned, and there are a lot of shared goals. So, for example, in Pennsylvania, back in January, Governor Wolf signed an executive order establishing the state's first statewide goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And it says in that executive order that the Commonwealth shall strive to achieve an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. That lines up perfectly with our resolution. Similarly, in Montgomery County, I went through the Montgomery County 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and again, lots of the same goals. It says in there that the county will promote energy conservation and sustainability. Small-scale renewable energy should be installed around the county, and local municipalities should adopt ordinances allowing renewable energy. And furthermore, in the Conshohocken Comprehensive Plan, it says, it calls for a plan for the conservation of energy and moving toward the future of alternative sources of energy to reduce dependence on non-renewable resources. This resolution is a mechanism to create that plan of action. Furthermore, the Comprehensive Plan of Conshohocken says that the Borough will implement practices that reduce energy consumption, increase efficiency, and increase use of alternative and renewable energy sources. That's exactly what this resolution does. So, the resolution itself, now we'll get into that, and the specific goals in there. So, just like in my career as a home energy auditor, it starts with efficiency, because that's the most cost-effective resource we have. And it's also going to, by investing in efficiency first, it reduces how much it's going to cost to build all the renewable energy to match that amount. So it's going to be a lot more cost-effective approach than ignoring efficiency and trying to build renewable energy up to that capacity. So efficiency is a very key part to this resolution. Also is the switch to clean and renewable energy, and the goal in the resolution is to switch to 100% renewable electricity by 2035, and 100% renewable energy for all energy sectors by 2050. And we set those dates so that we have clear targets to achieve, and we can set benchmarks to achieve those. And although it seems far off into the future... And although it seems far off into the future, we've got a lot of steps to take. So, we gotta get started now. And we can get started by drafting the Energy Transition Plan, which is kind of the next step in the resolution. So, also, some of the core elements, some of the themes in the resolution are that we want this transition to be equitable and just so that the benefits of this transition are apportioned across all the residents of Conshohocken, not just a few of them. And we also want this transition to be inclusive and transparent planning. And we're gonna continue actively seeking involvement from the residents of Conshohocken like we've been doing, calling, going door-to-door, giving presentations. The resolution also stresses local generation and job creation and gives priority to local ownership of these renewable energy sources so that we can keep the long-term benefits of this transition in the community. It also involves collaborating with neighboring communities so that we can pool resources for this transition. And it advocates for the interests of Conshohocken residents in affordable, reliable, and clean renewable energy. And it's gonna, will demonstrate progress along this transition by setting benchmarks in the transition plan and regularly meeting with you guys every six months to provide updates on how it's going. So, thank you.
Hello. So, the process. Once we commit to this resolution, the next steps for the near future will be establishing an Energy Transition Task Force team that can be an evolution of the team that we have already in place. Right now, we have a team of residents and volunteers that are coordinated by the EAC. And this will allow us to keep the residents and any stakeholders of our community involved in an inclusive type of process. Residents have a strong drive and participation, but sometimes they don't have the technical knowledge required to draft an energy transition plan. So, we really believe that it would be very important for us to commit also to have an energy consultant or an energy planner involved. This will make our plan more effective, practical, and totally connected to all available options that are out there. We hope that we can work with the administration to help searching and identifying this person. We are in touch. We have been in touch and we continuously are in touch with the Montgomery Ready for 100 group. This group has always provided us with support and in this process can also provide tips on the bidding process. And also find people, energy planners, that are currently serving other communities who, that passed the resolution before us. And we can seek to partner with those communities and share the cost of an energy planner, for example. Or we can apply for grant and incentives that are available. And we can also seek the help of a Montgomery County Planning Commission. Since the 2018 update of the Montgomery 2040 Comprehensive Plan states that is the commission responsibility assist municipality with sustainability and renewable energy planning and zoning. So, there are many, many resources out there that we would like to explore with the help of a professional and knowledgeable person. So, this group of people, the EAC, the Energy Transition Task Force Team, the administration, and the energy planner is the group that is going to draft the Energy Transition Plan. The EAC and the energy planner specifically will touch base with the administration monthly on this. And we are hoping to report back to the Borough Council twice per year regarding our progress. So, the drafting of an Energy Transition Plan will take a while, and we anticipate this process to last for nine, 12 months. And we will start assessing our currently energy situation. We will move into identifying strategies, programs, and tools available. And the idea is not to look just at Conshohocken, but also trying to find synergies with communities around us. And definitely, this will be a phase approach because we have two goals. By 2035, we need to achieve our first goal and 2050, our second goal. So, we will need to break this down into different phases and identify, like this slide can show you, what can be done in the first five years, 10 years, 15 years. However, the Energy Transition Plan that we are going to draft is not a static document. We expect this document to evolve over time and to go through a number of revisions that we can establish in a way that will be able to respond to the fast progress of the market and to any available incentives that can come up to finance this project and also to the legislation that might change over time. There are many documents and resources available out there. Here, we have a picture of some examples. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission published best practice guides and also ordinance templates to help with the actuation of this plan. And we hope to keep sharing our achievement and other community achievement together to get more resources as we go.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vipin Kumar. I have seen the devastation of ecosystem firsthand. I was traveling through the world, selling, buying things around the world. I have seen those things happening. I think this council has the foresight to make sure it doesn't happen here. What has happened over the year, we all remember, the oil price is going $140 a barrel. That was a crisis and an opportunity. The crisis is a terrible thing to waste, and we did not waste it as a nation. So, when, when out of this came all these alternate sources of energy. And now, now as you see, we have so many of them, geothermal, solar, kind of... Now, as you also see along with that, overall, American enterprise comes into picture. And the prices start to fall. It's a win-win for both. Then the third thing happens, there are high-paying jobs coming from that field. It's a trifecta. Number one, alternate sources of energy. Two, prices are going down. Third, people are getting high-paying jobs. So, all those things point to the case that this is a time to commit, to take it further. And as, as you have seen, seen earlier, where, where are we since the meeting happened last year? I think in October. Eight or nine communities in our area have already passed the resolution. We came to know last night, our neighboring town also went on the board. So, all those things are pointing to kind of... There's grounds well that is happening around us. So, this is a time to say the yes to this resolution. And I will urge you all to vote and support this. Blessed to take it forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I know I can speak for most of councilmen. We say we appreciate all of your hard work and sincere dedication that the EAC has shown on everything that they do. And it was a wonderful presentation, and your goals are well-done. So, you know, we thank you for coming in and doing the presentation. And now, I think that council will do our due diligence and go over everything and do our research that we need to do. And then we'll make a decision, so... But thank you very much. It was a great presentation. And we do appreciate all your...
I like that we have the kids involved.
Yeah, I think the kids should show off their signs.
There you go.
Just a quick question. If there are specific questions that council as a whole has, is it best if we compile them and give, and package them and bring them back to the EAC? Is that how you'd like the communication to work? Okay, so we'll, we'll review presentation, resolution, documents that were submitted. If there's follow-up questions, additional requests for information, I'll package it together, we'll pass it on to the EAC. You guys can do what you need to do with it, and we'll collaborate that way back and forth. Okay? Perfect.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Ms. Checo?
Okay. Under Manager Matters, item A is to consider approving a special event request by the VFW. They have asked to host a cornhole tournament on Saturday, April 27th, 2019. They're asking permission to close Wells Street between East Fifth Avenue and East Sixth Avenue from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. They are potentially looking to also allow alcoholic beverages outside. And in order to do that, they would be getting a special events license from the State Liquor Control Board if this event is approved. You would be, if you are so inclined, you would be approving the block party, the cornhole tournament, contingent upon all applicable license being turned into the borough.
That's Saturday?
Saturday, the 27th.
I want to make that motion.
Make that motion.
They're only closing the street for one hour.
I'm sorry, there's a typo in that. It's from 1:00 to 6:00.
1:00 to 6:00.
I just have a question for Chief Metz. Do you have any concerns about this event at all?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Make your motion again.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Allen, favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to consider a fee waiver request for Soul Yoga. This is an annual event that's hosted, and the proceeds go to Beats for Bella. Soul Yoga Studios hosts a summer solstice event at Sackville Park. It's a yoga event. Again, it's been approved for, I think, the last five years. And it's a fee waiver for use of the park.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Allen, favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item C is to consider approving a request for the sale and consumption of alcohol at the Philadelphia Phoenix Games at the A Field. Again, this is an annual request. The Philadelphia Phoenix utilize the A Field for their home field for their season. They are again requesting the sale of alcohol at the A Field for their event. They, again, it would be contingent upon receipt of the liquor license, which is held by the Wissahick and Brewing Company. We have their application. We have their certificate of insurance on file. We are waiting on the liquor license itself. So, again, you'd be, if you are so inclined, it would be approving the request contingent upon the submission of the liquor license.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Allen, favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item D is consider the approval of the mutual aid agreement with Lower Marion for mutual emergency management assistance. This is a template, a common template mutual aid agreement. It's with Lower Marion Township. We would assist, it's permitting the mutual assistance to the parties for fire, fire prevention, emergency medical services, hazardous materials control, and other emergency support in the event of fire, disaster, or other emergency. It's been reviewed by our legal, and there are no legal issues with the wording itself. I would highly recommend that you make the motion to approve the mutual aid assistance.
I'll second that motion.
Allen, favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Last item under Manager Matters is to approve the request for the tuition reimbursement for Officer Sean Gregory. Again, this is a CBA item. The amount is approved in the budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Allen, favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
I do not have anything else.
I think we'll go down to council and mayor, council member and mayor Matters. Mayor Aronson?
Okay. Let's do that last. Okay. I have a few things to... So, Dog Park. I've been our liaison to the Dog Park Committee since the start of 2009. I've gotten a good feel for the membership, their vision for the committee, and their needs moving forward to be effective for us. This is one of our newest committees and our youngest as far as average age. It serves as a way for our younger residents to get involved and to help us manage a topic that is growing in importance to the neighborhood. In the past few months, they've engaged directly with the community with events such as Down Dogs, Wit Dogs, a yoga class at the Riverview Dog Park, Conshohocken Brewing Company Drink Give Back Night, and Pints with Pups at the Lucky Dog Restaurant. At their last meeting, the Dog Park Committee voted unanimously to recommend the following changes in its organization and structure to council. The first is to change the scope of the committee from overseeing Riverside Dog Park specifically to overseeing all Dog Matters borough-wide. As an example of how this change would serve the borough, in the last few weeks, residents have asked the committee to discuss signage for dogs at Aubrey Collins Park. Dog walkers had been using the park against park rules. The committee recommended to administration that signage be moved and upgraded and that dog walkers be directed to Riverside Dog Park. These endorsements are all in the process of happening in coordination with Recreation Services, Public Works, and our administration. The second recommendation is to change the committee's residency requirement. Currently, two seats on the committee must be from Ward 3. The committee asks that any borough resident be allowed to apply for any seat, which will better suit the committee's proposed borough-wide scope. The final recommendation is to change the required number of years of service from three to two years. This will help with the committee recruitment and allow for changeover in the committee so it remains accessible to residents interested in applying and participating. As always, the committee thanks you for your support and for your consideration of these recommendations. And then, the second notice for council is I've been discussing the memorial for Paul McConnell. And we've been working with the Conshohocken Community Garden. And we've targeted May 19th as a date for a memorial. We're in the process of trying to get a bench installed with a memorial plaque. And then, I, in conjunction with administration, will be writing a proclamation to dedicate it. So, that is, that is for your information for your calendar.
Do you have a date, a time for that?
Not as of yet, but probably, we are actually giving out our new recycle bins and trash cans that weekend, so it'll probably be a little later in the afternoon. And then, finally, the EAC's biggest event of the year is the trail cleanup, the streets cleanup. That's going to be on next Saturday, the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Brewing Company. All materials are being provided by the Brewing Company, coffee by brunch, and the Cub Scouts are gonna participate and bring breakfast for everybody, so... So, it should be a really fun day. And the VFW is gonna give lunch to all volunteers afterwards at the VFW. So, you're all always welcome to join us as are all residents.
And that's also opening day of Little League.
It is, yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, I took your thunder.
That's okay. It's all right. What street are you...
It's gonna be the entire east side.
The east side?
Yeah. Yep.
That's quick. At what time?
That's actually in the fall. Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Clarify a few items for, from the mayor. We're going to work specifically with the Dog Park Committee over the next couple of weeks to clarify what they are, what to them, all Dog Matters borough-wide means specifically so we can break that down and actually put it into a resolution. So, I'll work directly with the mayor and Lauren and Marissa, who's the chair of the Dog Park Committee, to clarify and kind of get into the weeds of what that looks like. So, we'll come back to you with what that proposed resolution would look like. That will be the next step in this process. In terms of the years in service and the residency requirement, does anyone see a major issue with that? Okay. So, we'll work that into the resolution as well.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. And then, regarding the memorial for Paul McConnell, I do need a motion this evening. The approximate cost of the bench and installation is around $1,200. So, we would need approval from council to move forward with that memorial.
I'd just like to make the announcement, next Saturday, Little League opens. So, it's a great event. If anybody wants to stop down, 9:00 o'clock.
9:00. A report from the sewer authority. Sora West has been granted an extension for their tapping fees with no promise of keeping the capacity for them. Yes, Sora West. Caldwell Lane Eastmans, they've been, the property owners have been approached regarding appraisals on their property, so that we can obtain the right to go onto their properties in case there's a problem with their sewer. Let me see. West Conshakken Borough, the board discussed the intention to send out letters to each West Conshakken property owner confirming the sanity, sanitary sewer capacity that they own in terms of EDUs to document the capacity that is assigned to each property. We're also moving forward on our delinquent council of over $1,000 by sending out notices for water shut-offs. And we have several ongoing projects. That's 701 Jones, and that is the only one I have listed. Okay. Oh, and the board has also made a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the elementary school for their carnival time.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, that's it.
Tina?
We had the Conshakken Rowing Center board meeting this past week. We did a budget review, they had a budget audit, and everything looked good as far as their finances and how they're allocating their funds. Building maintenance and repair is ongoing. There was some concern about the stability of the riverbank and what we would need to do to make sure of that. Right now, it's in the monitoring process, so there is no expense related to the stability of the riverbank. There was mud, or still continues to be mud, under the ramps, which are breaking and affecting the ramps. So they're looking at potentially purchasing pumps to, when it rains and it floods, so that that mud doesn't actually settle and then break off pieces of the ramp. Rowing program updates, they're going into their race season, so they've got a lot of races planned, and they're going up to Canada again for nationals, so that's an exciting thing for the rowing center. They're still doing the programming for our residents under our funding. And, oh, the other big thing was the sidewalk pathway down by the rowing center needs to have an overlay done on the McAdam. So they're going to work with the borough to take a look at if that's something that we can actually help them do internally rather than going external.
Was that just a seal or a whole replacement?
Just the seal.
The seal.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Jane?
My only thing I would add to Yanni's and to the Dog Park comments, at Marywood Park, we have an issue too with families coming with their dogs and bringing their dogs on the port-in-place playground equipment. So we might need additional signage there and at Suck Cliff to keep the dogs off the playground park. You know, I know it's hard for the parents when they're trying to manage the kids and the dog, but we can't have the dogs on the playground.
There's a certain distance that's required for them to...
Right, right. They shouldn't, well, their nails will destroy the port-in-place.
But even beyond that, they shouldn't be there.
Right, right, right.
They wouldn't be there at all.
Yeah, so.
Okay, we can look into that, too.
Right.
Ike?
I have nothing.
Karen?
Just as a reminder that we have our first parking task force meeting the last Thursday of this month, April 24th, and that is at 6:00 p.m. Here.
Chief Metz?
Monday, the 14th, or the 15th of April, 10:00 a.m. is bingo time at the community center.
Right.
And I want to have an officer there to do a presentation on safety for our seniors, especially as it relates to the type of crime that is perpetrated against them. So if you can pass the word, we're going to do it again. We're going to try and take advantage of some of these gatherings of our seniors to get the word.
That's great.
Is that on the conscience?
Not, not yet.
Okay. But we'll, so we can share it on social media, make sure it's...
So it's 10:00 o'clock, we're going to be there a little earlier, so we don't interfere with them, maybe we'll stick around and put their notes.
We would love that, yes.
Just don't mess with the games, because they take that very seriously.
Yeah. I do have one more thing that I read about. So Saturday is the day that voters can go out to Montgomery County Community College to actually look at the new voting machines, and they're encouraging folks to come out and use the machines so that they can actually try and break them before our election day on May 21st. So if anybody is available to go on out to do this, to the voting system demo, I would highly recommend that we do that and try and break the machines for them before it comes. I will get that information. It just says May 21st. Bring a friend. 9:00 a.m. Let me open it.
April 6th, it would be, this Saturday?
April 6th. 9:00 to noon at Amblert's Borough Hall.
Oh, okay. It's not too far either.
It's off the beaten path.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have any public comments? Me and George.